We all set, Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, you all set? I'm going to go ahead and get started. Good evening and welcome to Scarborough Public Schools Board of Education meeting for December 3rd, 2020. Could I please have the attendance?
Mrs. Giftos?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Kazalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
And Ms. Giftos?
Here.
Here.
Right, could everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda item 3.0, oh, sorry, agenda item 4.0 is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments to the agenda tonight? I have one. I would like to move Agenda Item 6.4, S.A. Fest 2020 School Trip, to after Agenda Item 6.1 Enrollment Update, to allow Mr. Trantolito to speak before we hear from our other presenters this evening. Agenda Item 5.0, are there any public comments on tonight's agenda item? Seeing none, going to close public comment. Agenda Item 6.0 Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, April. I would like to make an announcement tonight, so you could just bear with me for a couple minutes. That would be wonderful. I wanted to inform the greater Scarborough School community that I have communicated to the board leadership that my two-year commitment as interim superintendent will soon be upon us. I am most fortunate to have had this opportunity to work in a high-performance school district and to serve the families of the greater Scarborough community. When I accepted this position, it seemed like an opportunity to stretch my skills and become part of a learning community that was moving forward and changes that would only enhance opportunities for all students. Fortunately for me, it was. I remain committed to the remainder of my time here, which ends June 30th, 2021, and without question, I will support the district by making the transition seamless for the new superintendent. Again, I am forever grateful to have had this interim experience, to have been part of this amazing Scarborough School community. Thank you so much. And that's my little announcement. And again, I just, you know, I was in the high school today in the morning, early morning, and walking around, and I'm looking at the students and how respectful, how polished, how focused they are. And I just think it's a tribute to the Scarborough community. It's a wonderful community. It's an excellent school system, and I have just really enjoyed my time here. And I thank you again. And I'd like to leave it at that. I'm an interim. I haven't been here for 20 years. I kind of want to go quietly and low-key, but I really want to make sure that we can get a person in this position, and I'm committed to working with that person and the administrative team to make it happen. So, thank you, April, and that's my superintendent's report. In addition to that, December enrollment, I'd like to just go over that. Again, we try to do this monthly. And as you will see, at the very top, going across, we're comparing this year from last year. And then we're going to look at how many homeschool students we have, how many remote students, and how many hybrid. So, starting with the high school, we are at 944 students currently. Last year, we had 988. We have three homeschool students and 112 100% remote. And hybrid, we have 836. At the middle school level, currently, we have 704 students. A year ago, we had 699. We have 19 homeschool, 116 remote, and we have 592 at the hybrid. Wentworth, we have 610 students, 666 last year. And with homeschool, we have 19, and we have currently 78% remote. And then, in addition to that, just want to get, whoops, sorry about that. Just lost my camera. Oh, man. Well, let's see. Well.
Sorry, Paul, can you?
While Sandy is working to kind of reconnect, can I ask a clarifying question? I think Diane will probably be able to answer this. I know I've asked this before, but since we have some different people in the audience tonight, I just pulled out my calculator, I'm totally that guy. And I was just looking at the numbers, and as I recall, the way this works is a total number, so like the high school at 944, that includes the remote and hybrid people, but not the homeschools, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And that would be the true of the 2019 number as well. That number would not include anyone that's homeschooled?
Right, we have, you know, we've actually, you know, never on a monthly basis reported out homeschoolers before this year. And when we went to the hybrid model this year, and understanding that, you know, folks are making many different decisions in our current environment with this pandemic, we felt like it was important to be reporting that during this school year.
Okay, I just wanted to, I was just trying to add everything up in my head, and so I just wanted to, for anyone at home that's data-obsessed as I am, I just wanted to ask that.
Is there anything I can do, Sandy?
There we go. Okay, sorry about that. You hear me okay?
No problem, thank you.
All right, Wentworth School, let's go back to that. Currently, 610 students. A year ago, 666. In our homeschool, we had 19, and 78 students went remote, and hybrid, 532. At Blue Point, currently, 199 students, and last year, we had 202. And again, if you look at all three elementary schools, homeschool, we're looking at 34 students, again, case two. At Blue Point, we have 38 students who are 100% remote, and we have 161 students at hybrid. At Eight Corners, currently, we have 227 students. Last year, we had 240. And when we look at the remote students, 100% remote, it's 54 students. And hybrid, we have 173 students. At Pleasant Hill, currently have 183 students. A year ago, 204. When you look at the 100% remote, we have 37 students, and with hybrid, we have 146. So, when we add this all up, currently this year, we have 2,872. A year ago, 2,999. And with homeschool students, total of 76. 100% remote in the district is 435 students. And when we look at hybrid, it's 2,436. That is it for enrollment.
Thank you, Sandy. Mr. Trantolito, I have promoted you to panelist, so you should be able to unmute. And if you want to turn your camera on, you can, but that's your choice.
I didn't realize it wasn't on, I apologize. Can you see me now? Yes, okay, sorry about that.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for, by the way, thank you for putting me toward the front of the agenda for this evening. And I just want to, just don't take too much of your time, but first, I just want to echo Superintendent Prince's comments about Scarborough Schools and definitely the high school. As we've been navigating this semester with a hybrid schedule and kids being remote, I must say, overall, the kids have been phenomenal. It's been, from my perspective anyway, I'm on the senior hallway on the first floor, but it's just been a really awesome transition from quarter one to quarter two, and now we're heading toward the winter break. So, I totally agree with Superintendent Prince that the high school students have been phenomenal. The reason I'm here tonight is to look ahead to 2022, which sounds very far away, and regarding international travel, which sounds obviously like a complete impossibility right now. But I have been working for about 10 years with EF Tours and have conducted 10 trips, I think now, to Europe with students from Scarborough High School. EF is the nation's oldest student travel company in the United States. And as you know, from some of you who have heard me come before the board in the past, we have multiple student travel programs at Scarborough High School, primarily through the foreign language program, but we've also had student travel in other departments, including what I do in the social studies department. We currently have a trip scheduled for June of this year, so June of 2021. I have about 26 students signed up to go to Italy. And believe it or not, EF Tours has signaled that they are going to notify us by the first week of May, if we're a go or if we're not a go. Obviously, we're at the early phases of a vaccine. Obviously, can't predict where we're going in the next six to seven months, but EF Tours remains optimistic. And what's really astonishing, too, looking at our student community and the parents in Scarborough, is that virtually everyone has sat tight and is remaining on the tour. I've had, I think I've had one person who was contemplating withdrawing from the tour. And the great thing, too, real quickly, is that EF promises a full refund and/or a travel voucher for a student, a future student trip if a student decides either they don't want to go in June and/or if we are unable to go in June of 2021. At the same time, if you really want to know the history, I had a trip scheduled in June of this past, this past June, so June of 2020, and that is also pending and on hiatus. So, I have, to make a long story short, I'm going to be run, if we go, I'll be running two tours within two weeks of each other in late June and early July. The delayed June of 2020 trip to London, Paris, and Berlin. And then we return, and then about 10 days later in July, a group of students will be going to Italy that has been planned all along for June of 2021. So, we're all just holding tight, and we'll see where we are in early May. And at this point, most students seem to be signaling they're ready to travel and/or are willing to take the voucher and go at a later time when it's convenient for them and their, possibly their college careers, to do a student tour at a later date. Why I'm here tonight is to talk about a trip in June of 2022, and that would be to Greece. I've conducted this tour in the past, about four years ago, we went to Greece, includes Athens and some of the islands. It's a historical tour. The kids who went on it had a phenomenal experience. And the reason I'm coming to you tonight is simply to plan ahead. And even though 2022 sounds very far away, generally about 18 to 24 months before departure is when I promote the trips. And I think the biggest reason is it gives people more time to plan. And for many students, particularly who finance the trip themselves, quite a bit of our students fund these trips on their own earnings. It gives them two years to basically plan ahead, finance it, and plan accordingly that way. So, I'm tentatively looking at holding an informational meeting for students who might be interested in traveling in 2022, probably, possibly, maybe late December or more likely in early, mid-January of 2021. So, I just wanted to reach out to you tonight to give you an update on student travel with my program at Scarborough High School. And I do know that we have, in the past, we've had trips, of course, in foreign language with Spanish and French and other programs in the building. And I do think the kids who do participate in these programs are really changed by them. They inevitably, as I hear from them, and they go off to college and beyond, they often do a semester a year abroad in college and/or graduate school. And it's just a phenomenal experience, and I'm very lucky to be a part of the program. So, I just want to reach out to you tonight, and thank you for your attention. If you have questions for me about any of these possible trips, looking at COVID right now, I'd be certainly happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for coming and giving us what is, was a pleasantly optimistic update. And we, I will certainly keep everything crossed that we find ourselves in a very different place in the spring and that these students are able to take advantage of these amazing opportunities. And thank you so much for being such an amazing ambassador for our kids, because these are once-in-a-lifetime opportunities, and they're very lucky to have somebody who is as dedicated to showing the world to them as you are. So, thank you. I don't see any hands for comments. Oh, Alicia has one, go ahead, Alicia.
Of course, it's me. I just wondered if the agency has ever discussed an opportunity to do some sort of funding for students who may not be able, in a position to afford, to afford travel independently? Or if you, if you know of a fund, some sort of fundraising or grant option or?
Good question. EF Tours definitely encourage, honestly, how I have primarily handled it, I know of teachers who have done student travel in other schools across the country, and some of them have engaged in a, like a community fundraiser or a group fundraiser for the trip, you know, for the students that are planning on traveling. I have not done that, in my experience, I haven't, honestly, I do think the impression is that it's, the kids that are going on their trips are very privileged and have this incredible opportunity. In reality, what I've really seen is many of them, almost sometimes all of them, are funding it themselves and/or funding it with maybe partial gift for graduation, that kind of thing. But your idea about having a, like a planned fundraiser for a student group to go, to go on one of these tours is an excellent one, and it's something that I've definitely have thought about in the past. Through Model United Nations, I do a, one or two fundraisers a year for college scholarship fund. And I've thought about doing a similar type of maybe annual fundraiser for kids who participate in it, who then could, we could distribute the profits and apply to kids' bottom line for being able to participate. So, that's definitely something, Alicia, that I would consider, and I would definitely welcome any ideas or suggestions from anyone in the community. But that is a very good point, because there are definitely ways that we could do that to get more kids on board. I would say, real quickly, what I'm really impressed with is that through the years, generally, I bring on average 25-plus students. One year, about four years ago, I took 40 kids, which was basically, we had our own tour by ourselves. Inevitably, we usually end up traveling with one or two other high schools from across the country. But the fact that so many kids from the high school in the past have really worked hard to come up with the funds and prioritize, you know, that in their budget to make it happen is impressive, too. But I certainly would welcome any ideas, and I will look into doing something like that for the 2022 trip as well. And I'll probably bring that up at the travel meeting. And the meeting, real quickly, is generally just an informational meeting, people who want to come. It'll be virtual, of course, and it's for students and parents to simply learn more about student travel with EF. And then generally, what I've tried to do in the past is have former students who've been on trips to come and speak to people in the meeting about their travel experiences. And we do discuss the financial component of it. In general, last thing, I feel like I'm in sales here. But in general, EF is actually one of the more economical student travel companies in the United States. There are several competitors of EF that I do hear from, and they're often significantly more expensive. So, I think one of the reasons the company has been so successful is that they're economical enough and can reach a broad number of students from all different kind of socioeconomic backgrounds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time tonight. I appreciate you fitting in, fitting me in, and please stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you.
And with that, Sandy, I will hand it back over to you to introduce our building principal. Or is Monique going first?
Monique is going to go first, yes.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening. Are you all able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Nodding heads. Wonderful. Thank you for having us tonight and providing the opportunity to share some data that we've been collecting and beginning to analyze. Two sources of data I'm going to talk about tonight. First will be the back-to-school survey from Panorama and the fall diagnostic assessment results from the iReady testing. So, buckle your seat belts and get ready, Mr. Gill, to get your data geek on, and we will get going here with lots of data. So, a little bit of background information about each of these tools. Panorama is, provides us with the ability to do surveys. Primarily, we were attracted to it because of social-emotional surveys, but it also has family and school community surveys, and we take advantage of this for our start team when we got going, and now our back-to-school survey as well. So, the surveys are provided to students in 3.5 and 6.12, two different versions with slightly different vocabulary, but essentially the same topics and questions. Also, we survey our families, and we also surveyed staff, our instructional staff, as well as our non-instructional staff. The questions are organized around particular topics, and each topic has anywhere from two to six questions. We honed down quite a bit of what they offered us just because we wanted to make sure that the surveys could be completed within about 10 to 15 minutes. The survey window was about 10 days in early November. And there is a link in this slideshow, and this will be made public, and I will share results on the webpage, as well as share in the weekly newsletter to all the detailed results and reports. I'm just doing an overview tonight on Panorama. iReady, we're sharing the fall diagnostic tonight. We, I've been doing a little bit of data analysis and taking a look at what the impact of our closure last spring has had on student performance. So, I'd like to share a bit of that with you as well tonight. Know that iReady assesses reading and mathematics, and our students in grades K through 9 take the assessment. You will see some, again, overview information. Know that within each of these content area, there are smaller subsets. We refer to those as domains, which teachers use to inform their instruction. It's not an achievement test. It really points towards instructional level. It also calibrates the online instruction piece, which is designed to provide instruction in the areas that students have gaps. And our survey window, it was about a month, it started in October, and we ended about, just after, on November 13th, just after the, it took Veterans Holiday. Took us a little longer this year because of our hybrid structure. A little bit, next slide indicates an overview of the survey topics. I'm not going to go through each one, but there are the responses also in that second row. I will share with you that for the grade 3.5 students, I went where students, that was a rate of 52%. For our students in 6.12, it was 65%. For our families, we had a return rate of 45%, so roughly half. K-12 instructional staff, we were at 81%, and for our non-instructional staff, 38%. And now, a little bit of information in regard to what, how the survey is constructed. The reports come back in a percent favorable. And the percent favorable means that for any of the questions, you'll notice that example question there, if there are five choices, and they are listed from more negative to more positive or more favorable, they set a bit of a high bar around favorable. So, you'll notice, not at all excited, slightly excited, and somewhat excited. Those three responses would be considered less favorable. They pull the top two favorable responses from the data. So, you will see a percent favorable, no, those are the top two choices. If there were five questions, if there were seven, it would be the top three. So, for our students at grades 3.5, and this, these are the four topics we assessed, and this is in the order of percent favorable, with student engagement scoring the highest in terms of percentage favorable. And I'll speak a little bit to each of these.
The questions are organized around particular topics, and each topic has anywhere from two to six questions. We honed down quite a bit of what they offered us just because we wanted to make sure that the surveys could be completed within about ten to fifteen minutes. The survey window was about ten days in early November. And there is a link in this slideshow, and this will be made public, and I will share results on the webpage as well as share in the weekly newsletter to all the detailed results and reports. I'm just doing an overview tonight on Panorama. iReady, we're sharing the fall diagnostic tonight. We, I've been doing a little bit of data analysis and look, taking a look at what the impact of our closure last spring has had on student performance. So I'd like to share a bit of that with you as well tonight. Know that iReady assesses reading and mathematics, and our students in grades K through nine take the assessment. You will see some, again, overview information. Know that within each of these content area, there are smaller subsets. We refer to those as domains, which teachers use to inform their instruction. It's not an achievement test. It really points towards instructional level. It also calibrates the online instruction piece, which is designed to provide instruction in the areas that students have gaps. And our survey window, it was about a month. It started in October, and we ended about just after, on November thirteenth, just after the it took Veterans Holiday. Took us a little longer this year because of our hybrid structure. A little bit next slide indicates an overview of the survey topics. I'm not going to go through each one, but there are the responses also in that second row. I will share with you that for the grade three, five students, or Wentworth students, that was a rate of fifty-two percent. For our students in six, twelve, it was sixty-five percent. For our families, we had a return rate of forty-five percent, so roughly half. K-12 instructional staff, we were at eighty-one percent. And for our non-instructional staff, thirty-eight percent. And now a little bit of information in regard to what, how the survey is constructed. The reports come back in a percent favorable. And the percent favorable means that for any of the questions, you'll notice that example question there. If there are five choices, and they are listed from more negative to more positive or more favorable, they set a bit of a high bar around favorable. So you'll notice not at all excited, slightly excited, and somewhat excited. Those three responses would be considered less favorable. They pull the top two favorable responses from the data. So you will see a percent favorable. No, those are the top two choices. If there were five questions, if there were seven, it would be the top three. So for our students at grades three, five, and this, these are the four topics we assessed. And this is in the order of percent favorable, with student engagement scoring the highest in terms of percentage favorable. And I'll speak a little bit to each of these. Our student engagement is really around how much our students pay attention to and are invested in what goes on in the classroom. And not surprisingly, they're pretty excited about what's going on in school. And we'll see some data that confirms that in a bit. Student relationships is really about the adult and student relationships and that connectedness and that sense of belonging. So student relationships is an important one. Also academic needs. And academic needs, the questions range anywhere from confidence in how a student feels confident in their ability to do well in school, all the way to how's your internet connectivity? Are you having problems with that? So it really tries to get a gauge on what their needs are academically. And then the learning model is about a couple of different things. The learning model is really taking a look at how content our students, families, and staff are with the amount of time they're spending in school and the amount of time speaking with teachers and with friends, as well as the ease of technology use. Certainly, that question within the learning model around the ease of technology use scored quite favorably. Not to usurp the final slide, but it may not be too much of a surprise, but at three, five in particular, in response to the quote, a certain question in there, over half the students at Wentworth want more time in school. Not surprising. Likewise, at six, twelve, if we jump to the learning model piece, they also want more time in school. A spot when the learning model that was particularly low that we're paying attention to is their satisfaction with their time spent speaking with their friends and interacting with their friends. That was less favorable, only scoring at about twenty-six percent within that category, which brought that learning model down. You'll notice here at six, twelve, there's an additional topic, school public health safety measures. And that really addresses how students feel about the safety protocols that are in place at school and how easy they are to follow. And you'll notice that the school public health measures across all these data sets score rather more favorable than the other areas. The two areas that we're diving into a bit is the learning model, because it scored relatively less favorably. And also the student relationships piece. And it's no surprise, given the environment we're in, is that our students reported that their connections to students was only at about twenty-eight percent favorable. And their connections to adults was twenty-nine percent favorable. So those are two areas our building principals and our staffs are going to be looking into more closely. Terms of families. We did ask the topic around additional family assistance, and this was in regard to food security, childcare, internet access, those sorts of things. If you recall, in the spring, we asked those questions as well. Here, you'll notice that the learning model is also relatively low, but interestingly enough, they're over fifty-five percent favorable was the score around the question with the satisfaction with the way in which the learning is currently structured. Less favorable at forty-nine percent was our families' confidence in their ability to support their children. And in terms of student needs, our families are worried about their children. There's a concern over SEL and peer relationships. That score was at about forty-nine percent in terms of student needs. And then, but on the upside, relationships with adults was much more positive scoring. That question is scoring at about seventy-three percent favorable. So in terms of instructional staff, you'll notice, again, school public health measures are up there. Interestingly enough, student engagement is as well. And diving into one of the questions there is that our instructional staff are noticing that students are quite engaged when they're in school. That was at seventy-seven percent favorable. And yet, engagement is a little less favorable in the virtual environment, which was about thirty-four percent. So we're going to need to tap into and dive into that to learn more about what's going on there and develop some strategies. In terms of student needs, across the grade levels, range from eighty percent to twenty-eight percent, when I looked at it across grade levels. And the lowest concern area was in the, our teachers are worried about our students' social emotional well-being as well. And that was at a twenty-five, twenty-seven percent favorable. As you recall, we began the year focusing on the social emotional learning pieces. We met this just before this meeting with the K-12 SEL committee, and we had conversations around this data. And they had an opportunity to begin to take a look at their action plans around that. And the learning model, our teachers reported that their confidence in their ability to help those who need it the most was at about thirteen percent. And then the impact of this learning model on their adult social emotional well-being was only at seven percent favorable. So our K-12 SEL committee is going to be doing some work focusing on adult SEL, as well as the wellness committee. We'll have access to this data and take a look at resources so that we might help better support our staff. Non-instructional staff really mirrors the instructional staff. We did not ask the topic around student engagement, but wanted to hear from our non-instructional staff as well, because they, too, have a perspective on our students. And in terms of student needs, they're worried about students' social emotional well-being as well, with only about a twenty-eight percent favorable response there. And yet, interestingly enough, when we asked the question about whether the extent to which they're worried about student behavior, that was seventy-two percent favorable. So, which was, which was interesting. The learning model, the one question in terms that was there in terms of how is this learning model impacting your social emotional well-being, the percent favorable there was thirty-four percent. So in summary, if we were to draw some broad observations around this data, higher favorable results were the safety pieces. People are feeling good about the safety protocol that are in place. And that we saw across students, families, and staff. Also, student engagement from instructional staff feedback and student feedback was more favorable, had higher favorable results than some of the other topics. Communication also was there about mid-range of concern, and we need to do some more study of the data and have conversations. Is the learning model, particularly that question around social emotional well-being, we are all stressed. This is an anxious time, and we need to help support each other in taking care of ourselves. Student needs as well. Staff are worried about our kiddos, and families are worried about our students as well. And so we're going to be taking a look at that data more deeply as well and see what kind of action planning we can do around that. And student relationships, not surprisingly, for our adolescents who are quite concerned about their social lives. They're not feeling as connected as maybe they want to be and maybe should be at this point in their lives. I'm gonna switch gears into the iReady very quickly unless there are some quick questions.
Nick has a question. Go ahead, Nick.
I'm fortunate that my mute button is the right way, or otherwise I'd be totally confused like you. I just wanted to ask a really quick question. So obviously, that that survey is very powerful. And of course, when we're looking at surveys, the number one thing I want to think about is validity, which is why using a product like that as opposed to some homegrown product has a lot more clout. And so I just, I just kind of wanted to ask, do we have any kind of information about the validity of that survey? How widely it's used? What kind of information we've gotten back that it's telling us what we think it's telling us?
Yeah, the Panorama for Education, they're involved in over, their surveys are used in over one million, one million students. They're used nationally. I participate in some of their professional development, so I am able to network with leaders across the country. So it has gone through and met validity and reliability benchmarks. That's what these folks do, and they're tapped out of some of the work that out of Harvard University and some of the work that's done with research and education out of Harvard. So it is well grounded. The other piece that it also adds for us is, and there's an element within the reporting software called playbook. And they have a relationship with a number of different providers, whether those are activities, learning activities, those sorts of things, everything from second step, all evidence-based sorts of activities from a variety of organizations. So as we look online at the results, we have the ability to also break it out and break it down. But what happens is they are playbook suggestions are being made, what activities. So for example, in the adult SEL, there are adult SEL sorts of activities from which the K-12 committee can draw from to implement with students as well as with staff.
Great. Thank you so much.
Alicia?
Thank you. I was really encouraged when I saw the the data. I thought, you know, how favorable it really appeared to be. And and I wasn't surprised about the response related to social emotional learning. And I think it's sort of a microcosm of what we're seeing in society in general. And I don't want to focus on my own kids and own interests, but that's what I know, you know, most, where I get the most feedback. And, you know, I do hear from from peers that, that, you know, that they're concerned about it. And one of the feedbacks that I've heard from my middle school daughter is about mask breaks and and interacting with peers and how that has been difficult and become even more difficult during the colder weather, that that sort of limits their ability to interact. And so I thought that that was interesting feedback from her, and it made me wonder sort of what the other schools that I don't know about are are doing. And how, given our climate, especially unfortunately, how we can foster those relationships safely? And, you know, they're there. It's like they're so close and it's such a, you know, and I know that you've been really thinking outside of the box. And I was just wondering what what steps you've been thinking about as that has become a barrier.
That's something that the principals can better answer, because they are living it every day in terms of the constraints within their buildings and the safety protocol. I do know that I have listened into conversations that they've had in trying to think about the many different ways that they can accommodate that. Diane?
Yeah, I was just going to add that the other interesting phenomenon that's happened in the past couple of weeks, Alicia, is the state has changed the requirements around mask breaks, and they've really tightened them up. And so mask breaks can't be longer than five minutes. Students have to be, you know, not moving around. It's much more prescriptive than it was earlier in the year. And and again, my sense about that is that they tightened up those requirements as the number of cases in the state began to increase. So I absolutely hear what you're saying.
That makes perfect sense. It's just so sad, you know?
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all.
Thank you.
So we're just going to have to be even more creative.
I'm not seeing any other comments, Monique, so if you'd like to keep going.
Sure. So in terms of the iReady data, what I'm providing, we have different, within the application, we have the ability to look at it from different views, a beginning of year view, a standard view, and an end of year view. I'm just making it clear that I'm, we're looking this today for consistency's sake, out of the beginning year view. And what that means in terms of these little triangles is that green portion represents on or above grade level. But know that the yellow, two grade levels below, please know that if you are in the fall of your third grade year, anything grade two, which you might think might be a full year below, is still considered green because you haven't started your third grade year yet. So it's just a different view we use. As we look towards the winter and into the end of the year, we use the other views, which gives us a more, a more refined look at where students are. And again, this is instructional level, not achievement, and that it also calibrates the online instruction. So for reading, what you have in the next slide is reading. And if we look at all the students who were assessed in the beginning of the year fall 2019, you'll notice that across all the schools, eighty-three percent of our students were at or above grade level. You'll also notice, as a result of this fall's assessment, all the students who were assessed in that green area on or above grade level is eighty-seven percent. So some of the notions and wonders and worries and anxiety that I had been fielding is, oh, my gosh, our kids are going to be so behind. This is going to be catastrophic, on and on and on. And our charge last year was to continue the learning. So I'm going to share with you some bits of data here around that, some different views of the data. Know that with this, in 2019, we did not start, this did not include our kindergartners. And in fall of 2020, we did not assess our 10th graders. So I'll point some of those pieces out as we go along. In mathematics, you'll notice if you focus on that tier one, eighty-five percent in the fall of 2019, eighty-six percent in terms of on or ready for grade level this year in fall of 2020. I've even had staff ask the question, well, did they adjust their standards? No, they have not adjusted their standards. They're using this against the same set of standards. So breaking it out by building, and this is going to get a little tiny in terms of the screen, but here's Blue Point, Eight Corners, and Pleasant Hill in terms of reading. And again, you'll see that consistency off by a few percentage points for the students who are at or above grade level. If we look at math for the primary in the next slide, you'll notice the same thing across all three schools, pretty consistent. In some cases, the percentage of students and their readiness has gone up. In Wentworth and middle school, and again, this is reading, for Wentworth, you'll notice eighty-seven percent, and then beginning of fall 2020, eighty-nine percent. For the middle school, you'll notice for reading eighty-one percent, and you will notice a drop, a bit of a drop here, seventy-eight percent. And there's some other data that we're still going through to find out a little bit more about in terms of some of the drops. So if we look at mathematics, in mathematics at Wentworth, you'll see ninety percent and ninety percent between last fall and this fall. You will see a drop at the middle school, eighty-six percent to seventy-six percent. And that's something where we still need to do some data mining around. The next slide, you know, as you look at those, you can say, well, if we look school to school, you only have two grade levels, roughly two grade levels that are consistent, because you've got a batch of kids leaving one year and a batch of kids coming in the next year. So it really isn't apples to apples. So what this chart tries to do is to take a look at the same cohort of students. And this is where we start to see some potential differences. So if you look, this is reading, and these are the cohorts. Grade one in the fall of 2019, in that reddish light red, that's ninety-seven percent of our students were at or above grade level. That same group of students this fall are second graders. Their score was at eighty-eight percent. But if you look across those colors of similar colors, you see ninety-two and eighty-nine for second grade. You see eighty-seven, the third grader is moving into fourth, eighty-seven percent and ninety-three percent. So there are some differences across cohorts, and that can be in part the cohort. It could be a number of different things. We're still trying to tease those pieces out. If we take a look at math, in math, you'll notice that quite possibly those differences are a little greater than in reading. I've been in communication with the folks at iReady to try and get a handle on what does the national picture look like here? And it's pretty consistent that they have seen nationally about a six percent drop in reading cohort data. But in mathematics, it's a little bit larger. I think it's around fourteen to eighteen percent in terms of differences. I think it's around fourteen to eighteen percent in terms of differences between fall and fall. And they grabbed their fall data earlier than we did this year. So they're still working on that data, they're still mining that data. And so lastly, in terms of an overview, what we really need to note is that we set a goal for ourselves, yes, it was emergency learning, yes, it was school closure, but we wanted to continue the learner learning and we wanted our students to stay connected as a learning community. And they did that. The majority of students did that, they continued their learning. And so I think we really do need to celebrate our teachers and celebrate our parents for their work and helping to support students, and of course, the students themselves who continued their learning. And all the folks were involved in helping to make sure that that period of time last spring and that learning last year, the impact was minimal. The cohort data in reading had a less of a drop than in math, and we are still exploring that. All that said, I want to be right up front that we still have some students who are struggling. They're not exactly where we want them to be, and we want to make sure that we continue to monitor them and provide the support that they need to ensure that they make progress towards grade level achievement. Happy to answer any questions that you might have about that?
Monique, I don't know if you're even going to believe me, but no one has their hand raised.
Wonderful, thank you so much for your time.
No, Monique, thank you, and thank you for giving us, you know, a high-level overview. I know that as a parent, I had been anxious to hear back on some of the iReady data. This is a lot to take in and a lot to process in terms of thinking about where some of those discrepancies come from, but I certainly appreciate you giving your time to us tonight. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving on in our agenda, we are at Agenda Item 6.2, Remote Learning Preparedness. And I have taken the opportunity to promote our building principals to become panelists.
So I'm going to kick this section off for us. So as requested, our principals have put together some slides for you this evening to give you an update on our learning plans if we needed to go into a fully remote model for any period of time. So happy to kick that off. Kelly, if you could move to the next slide. So just to frame this work a little bit more for all of you this evening, we would first of all like to thank you very much for the additional time that was recently granted, especially at our younger levels where there may not be that same synchronous connection happening because of different developmental needs of our students. I know that our staff benefited greatly from the time to really dig in and drill down. We want to remind everyone that as these plans were put together, there were a number of resources that were utilized, starting with recommendations from our start work this summer, examining what our current learning model looks like for hybrid. They have utilized all of the staff, family, and student feedback from the Panorama Survey that you just got a high-level overview of. They also utilized the current remote teaching expertise. There's my little dog, see, I started talking. Sorry. And so, you know, we have some teachers that are doing fully remote, and so there were some great lessons learned from them. And then they examined what are some of the best practices that are out there around distance learning? And so there are a couple of resources that are right here on this slide, the Distance Learning Playbook has been utilized K-12 and connecting with students online more so at the K-5 level. And we also have utilized student data. And, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, that is so distracting. And so with that, I think I will kick things off and pass the torch on to K-2. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. And before I jump into this slide, on behalf of all the building leaders that are on this call and are in the district, we just want to say thank you to Sandy. That's a big announcement, and we appreciate that he was in our position and has held many, many different positions in his career. And so he knows what many of us do on a daily basis. And we appreciate his support and his understanding for the last two years. And I can't imagine coming into a district as an interim and being handed a global pandemic and school closures and all of that as somebody who's new to the district and new to the system and not familiar with anybody. So thank you, Sandy, on behalf of all of us. We really do appreciate your support and kindness for the last two years and wish you well in your next retirement, which I hope lasts longer than thirty days of your first one. So let me jump into the slide now. So again, we thank you for giving us the two Wednesday mornings to make this plan to help build our plans up a little bit more. As we've learned in the last three or four months of school, there are shades of red, right? There are shades of pink and red, and they're not all going to be the same. We're not going to be just closed indefinitely and unexpectedly like we were in the springtime. We are seeing, you know, classrooms being quarantined, teams being quarantined or sent home for a few days, but not the whole district being shut down completely. So we're looking at tiers of closure here. So a short-term remote learning plan of two weeks or less, we'll maintain our same schedules and our cohorts with just some slight adjustments. And that would, you know, try to maintain as much of the same predictable daily routine as you would have if you were in school, if your class gets quarantined or gets sent home. And then there's the longer term, right? There's things that are going to be, there could be potential closure for more than that time. And that's a different, that's a different game for K-2 especially because our kiddos are not just going home and sitting in front of a computer, independently accessing things and independently finding what they need and doing what they need to do for school. They require a great deal of adult support. So kudos to all the parents and caregivers out there who are helping our kids on their remote days now because it takes a team to get a five and six and seven-year-old on a computer at the right time, at the right place, in the right Google meets. And they are doing it, and they're doing a great job. But if everybody's closed, those caregivers may change, and those daycare situations may change, and they may have to learn, they may have to have grandma learn something new to help with their child get on Google meets for the first time. So we need to be patient, we need to be flexible, and we need to be aware that some of this is not going to be smooth and easy and just doing the same thing they were doing in school but at home. So our transition plans do have some chance to learn and to grow and to be flexible and really thoughtful for the caregivers and for the helpers at home that are going to be with these kiddos, whether they're at daycare or at home. But we want to provide a very predictable daily schedule for kids to be online live with their teachers, to hear instruction and to see their classmates, and then make sure that we have a really good, clear system for distribution of materials and things from each building. Right now, our fully remote Cohort C teachers have a really good system with their families of pickup and drop-off of materials, curbside distribution, as we call it, and we can expand that to include all the other homerooms as well. So we're learning a lot from our hundred percent Cohort C teachers and how they've managed to build schedules that work for kids and for adults, and that's what we'll be doing. I think Jessica has the next slide.
Good evening. Before I talk about this, I just want to think and let you know that although Anne and I are speaking tonight, Kelly Mullen-Martin definitely was helping put all of this together and actually got us started on our slides, and she is home under the weather. So I just want to make sure you guys know that she sends her best, and we wish her well and feeling better. So when we think about a K-2 student going into a fully remote learning environment, we wanted to make sure that we addressed the priorities for that. And as Anne mentioned, our K-2 students are just not yet independent learners, and they require a great deal of adult support. And in that remote environment, that support may or may not be a family member. So we also have to keep in mind that they're in a variety of settings with a varied level of support. When we talk about attendance in a remote environment for a K-2 student, as any student actually, we're not just noticing if they showed up and are present on the screen, we're paying close attention to their level of engagement. And we've been talking a lot with our teachers about how we maintain and increase engagement in that remote environment. And Monique spoke a little bit to this earlier from the Panorama Survey data. Our students need a variety of academic and behavioral supports, and this does not go away in a remote environment. In fact, this was one of the areas on our Panorama Survey that our staff expressed they were most concerned about. And just like we support students, we have families that need us in different and unique ways. So we want to make sure we're staying current on those needs and responding to them promptly. In our full remote plans, we're really hopeful that our buildings would remain open so that we can access everything that we need, from curriculum to copy machines. So that materials drop-off and pickup that Anne mentioned that's already in place with our Cohort C families would be a coordinated effort school-wide and making sure that everybody got what they needed in a timely way. And then our perhaps most important priority, of course, is making sure that our communications are strong with our staff, with our families, and also with each other, so that this is our list of what's the most important things we want to keep in mind as we transition or if we transition to a fully remote learning model. And our next slide, Kelly, or whoever's navigating, are two examples of what our hybrid teachers have created on the two days that we were granted to work on this. So we've got a first grade sample and a second grade sample so that you can see more clearly what that day might look like for a student who is transitioning from a hybrid model to a remote model. That is the K-2 piece.
Next we'll move.
Leanne? Oh, why don't we, since Leanne has her, that's okay, Dan, since Leanne has her hand up, it probably makes sense to chunk out the question, so go ahead, Leanne.
This may be applicable across all phase levels. There was the conversation about a two-week versus a longer term. How will we know if it's only two weeks when we go out versus could have extended?
I can give an example of what's happening just right now at Pleasant Hill. I mean, we have a class that's currently quarantined, and so that's a less than two-week situation. So that classroom teacher did not have a transition period of two, you know, two days to gather stuff and that kind of thing. We had the conversation on Sunday afternoon, and she emailed a schedule out to her families on Sunday night. And so it was a seamless transition into a remote setting. And that's, in our minds, what we think would be a less than two-week. It's really that close-contact quarantine-type situation.
Thank you. So this isn't if the governor comes back on a Friday and says, we've gone into this phase, we're not considering it that way?
Exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions.
Hi, everyone, good evening, just making sure that you can hear me okay?
We can, Kelly.
Great, thank you. So K-5 worked really closely on preparing for those two half-days that our staff had to prepare for any potential transition to fully remote teaching and learning. And I linked into this presentation the full K-5 PD slide deck in case any board members were curious as to all of the detail that you can browse at your leisure about the work that we did over the course of that full day, broken up into two half-days. So the time really was valuable for, I'm sure for everybody, but particularly for K-5, it's not as simple as, it's not as seamless to transition as perhaps it is at 6:12 because they have a component of live streaming taking place right now. They're like very well poised to make a quick switch with, of course, a ton of work, but it's a little bit different for K-5. And so my portion of this evening is to give a little bit more insight as to why it's different at the younger levels, building upon what my K-2 colleagues began talking about with the developmental differences in childcare needs. So if, Kelly, you could go to the next slide, please. So on our exit slip at the end of our PD time after the first day, I captured all of the open response questions to the prompt, what are your biggest questions or needs at this time, and created that word cloud there. And so the bigger the word, the more frequently it was included in the response to what our staff needs or what kinds of questions they have. So you will see, not surprisingly, screaming at you from the middle in bold red, time, time, I need more time. And we haven't yet figured out how to add more hours to the day, but we were very grateful for the time to separately have a moment to stop and prepare for something and spend the time on something that may never happen, right? It's really hard when you're so busy working every day to plan for the week ahead, to also on top of that, plan for something in the distance that may never happen. So we were grateful for that time and that opportunity. But you can see what the other words are in here, and we spent the second half-day trying to address what those specific needs of the staff were in those questions. And really, one of their biggest questions was, okay, so if we transition to fully remote, will we maintain this cohort model? Or are we going to collapse the cohorts and have all of our kids be on the same exact schedule every day? And a little, the K-2 leaders began speaking about that, that there's kind of two phases of red. And in the shorter term, like Jessica described, if there's a class or a team or a section of the building that is fully remote for fourteen days due to a close contact, or if there's a designated shorter-term closure, we will maintain our hybrid schedule with some slight tweaks and continue in the way that we are, in the way that we're addressing learning now, except that everybody will be at home. So they'll maintain their two cohorts, and I'm going to show you an example of that in just a minute. If it's a longer-term shutdown, we will shift to a schedule more like Cohort C, but I'm going to show you why this is a little bit complex. Kelly, if you could open the first link, please, the grade five red hybrid with supports. So this is an example of a hybrid teacher's schedule right now. And so, as you know, in a hybrid model, one group of students comes on Mondays and Tuesdays, and another group of students comes on Thursdays and Fridays in person. So on Monday and Tuesday, we have our Cohort A students in person. Every single day, the entire class is meeting together at the beginning of the day for morning meeting, to check in, to address their SEL needs, to have a mindful to check in, to address their S E L needs, to have a mindful moment, hear the morning announcements, connect as a whole class community. But then half of the students leave and address most of their learning that day asynchronously, meaning they don't follow the exact schedule, they have flexibility in how they complete their work. So if you've ever tuned into the end of a morning meeting, it sounds a little something like this. Okay, my at home friends, now remember what we talked about when you were in school on Friday is you have your math packet, you have your writing on seesaw, and you're going to continue your, okay, you get the point. And so they have their list of assignments, they have their planner, and they tackle it in the way that works best at home or at daycare or at grandma's with or without an adult there to support them. The intermediate age is really interesting because there's a big difference between a third grader and a fifth grader with regard to what they can independently accomplish. April nodding her head, I think she has both. So there's a big difference between those developmental ages and the amount of support that they require. So our at home friends on Mondays and Tuesdays are sent off to address still work asynchronously. They have a couple opportunities to check back in with their teacher, but for the most part, they are following their schedule. Now, those yellow highlights that you see are the schedule for some at home friends on their remote days. So the yellow highlights are kids who are at home, but they have scheduled support services during their asynchronous learning time. So they have specific times that they'll log on throughout the day to get perhaps social work, perhaps speech therapy, perhaps some OT, doing some OT exercises or literacy support or math support. That breaks down to, there are 95 students in special education who may receive related services. So not just at reading time, you go to reading, but may receive those services that I just mentioned. And there are over 125 students in academic support at Wentworth receiving those types of services. So it's a lot of kids who are scheduled at specific times on their at home learning days. So why we can't just say, okay, now that we are fully remote, this time from nine 45 to 10 45 every single day is going to be math for everyone. It's because that would completely disrupt all of those 295 students who on their non cohort days are receiving support services. So this took a little bit of time to figure out, took a little frustration, a little, a little sweat on the part of our staff. And I think that we came to a pretty great compromise. So Kelly, if you would go back to the slide deck and then click on the second one, sample fully remote with supports. So some of the givens are that everybody has to maintain the master's schedule. But within that, and Kelly, if you could just slide down a little bit so that we can see perhaps that first block, perfect. So morning meeting, that's not going to change a bit. And everybody is going to tune in for the very beginning of the math lesson and have these structured times that staff will touch base with their class. But some kids are going to go off and do their asynchronous work. And that would give those students with the highlights their, their opportunity to continue attending their support services. And then the students who would have been in school are going to stay online with the teacher and have their more synchronous learning time. And so it won't be exactly that they're all doing the same thing at the same time, because guess what? That's not how it happens in regular school anyway. When we're all in person together, the teacher is very rarely at the front of the room having all of the children do exactly the same thing. We work in a workshop model at the K five level and students are at different places. And they may come together for the beginning of the lesson, but throughout the course of the lesson, teachers are checking in with small groups and students are working on different things at different paces. So over the course of the week, everybody gets, you know, to the same place, but they're coming at it from different pathways. So Kelly, if you could go back to the main slide deck. So that final bullet on this slide, and I'm sorry that this was a very long explanation, but it's complex, is that we will align to the master's schedule, maintain the support and related services schedules, and then build in those breaks and section up the main courses so that students who it would have been their in person days will have more synchronous learning time. And if it would have been your remote day, you'll have more asynchronous learning time. Go to the next slide, please. So at the end of the two days, we checked back in on our outcomes. And this is really what Diane went over at the very beginning of this section of the slide deck. You know, these were the things that we sought to do to ground our work in that evidence from the surveys and look at our data, gain further clarification from our work and capture the outcomes in the exit slip. And we wish that it was just as simple as that little picture right there, wake up, teach kids, be awesome. But it's not. Schools are really complex learning organizations. And there's a lot of devil in the details, as they say. So if you would go to the very last slide for Wentworth, these were the four things that we ended with. Some time for teachers to collaborate in their grade level teams, in their smaller planning teams, and with their partner teachers, they organize plans, they really thought through this schedule in many, many different ways and landed on something that we think will satisfy each of these criteria and priorities and started preparing materials. And then this final word cloud that I'll leave you with here today and stop talking so my middle school colleagues can, can have a turn here. I'm wondering if you could guess, again, the larger the word, the greater frequency, what do you think the prompt was for this one? In teacher land, this is called giving wait time.
No one is volunteering their hand. The prompt could have been, what, what is our focus?
So close, so close. Great, great guess. It was what teachers thought their biggest strength was in transitioning to, in transitioning to a potential fully remote learning situation. So I mean, I guess at the risk of being obnoxiously positive, our staff, they're tired, but they're incredible and they'll go to the ends of the earth to, to make whatever is put in front of them work. So we're grateful for any time that you can provide us time to really plan like you did for this. So thank you so much. And I have a lot of faith in our staff and the work that they do. So thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Thank you, Kelly. We, we all always appreciate your obnoxious positivity. Sarah has her hand up. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thanks, Kelly. You alluded to the fact that you met with your staff. Was it the entire staff or just leadership? It was everybody?
It was everybody.
Okay. Cool. Thanks.
Over those two half days, the two half day Wednesdays when we didn't have, when we didn't have students.
Great, thank you. Now we can't hear you, April.
Fantastic. I'm not seeing any other questions, so we can go ahead and move on to the middle school, please.
Good evening. As Kelly mentioned, it is easier at the middle school level. Our students are just going to continue with their current class schedule. Are, we have over 100 students who are 100% remote right now. And then our cohort students, the A and B, they are remote on two of the days of the week. The one thing we will be doing is all following the same bell schedule. And we picked the current eighth grade bell schedule because the lunch is right in the middle of the day. Our seventh graders do eat lunch a little bit later, so we wanted to all go to one schedule. And Wednesdays will look the same. Our students, they all will log in at the beginning of their Google meets. There'll be a mixture of synchronous and asynchronous methods. When a teacher is out, they post the assignment on their Google classroom. We also do want to make sure students have opportunities during that class period to work offline. We do not want students on their screen all day. But right now, oftentimes, a teacher will have their Google meets open. Students are able to go work independently, but they can go on to the Google meets if they have questions. We will continue to take attendance at the beginning of the day during our crew meetings and also during each class. And again, the goal is still have students completing their work during the school day as much as we can. Again, to keep students off of their screens in the evening. And then we'll still have all of our meeting times in the schedule. So teachers will still have that collaborative time to plan their units. We really appreciated the November 18th and December 2nd day. We spent the morning of the 18th looking at our R Ready data. And then the morning of December 2nd, we looked at our Panorama survey data. And so we still have a lot of work to do to incorporate our, what we learned from that data. The staff did noticeings and wonderings, and then they listed areas to celebrate and areas for growth. So we'll be digging into those areas for growth. And we have committees at the middle school and we have quite a few that are geared towards either teacher social, emotional learning, or students. And so they will be working on some of the data from Panorama. There was a big focus on the lesson planning for remote learning. And whether or not we go to 100% remote learning, those, the, the planning they did can be implemented in the hybrid model also. So they really, they went back again and they did this at the beginning of the year, you know, looking at the curriculum and looking at what do they really need to cover this year? What's the essential learning, taking those recommendations from the K 12 curriculum committee? And then incorporating the remote learning best practices and the lesson plans. You know, teachers have the distance learning playbook as a resource. And we also have a book study going on for optional for teachers who have joined that. And, you know, planning for that remote assessment was something else. And there was a lot of other work, you know, looking at technology and looking at pieces, but it was very valuable. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Nope, I'm not seeing any hands. Kathy, thank you.
So at the high school, first, I, I would just, I would like to do two quick things. One is congratulate Sandy, and I'll leave it at that, but congratulations. And at the high school level, I just want to thank all of the building for the work they're doing. Teachers and staff here are working so hard to meet every need for the students. And our students have just been incredible in their efforts. They are making the best of tough situations. They are just doing remarkably well. And I just want to thank everyone. At the high school, we began this summer planning a schedule with eyes in mind of being able to go from green to yellow to red lanes. And our plan encompassed that from the beginning. So our teachers at the high school have been teaching in multi strains every day, all day this year. In that every period, they have students in front of them that are working in person that day. They have students that are having their non in person days, and they have students in class that are fully remote. So our staff has really been doing all of this work every period in multi modes. And, but the good news is that for the high school, if we were to go fully remote, our schedule would remain initially the same. Like Kathy mentioned, we would, instead of having three different lunchtimes, which we get to do to feed 1,000 students or 500 in, in distance learning. But we would just do block one, block two in their advisory time in the morning. And then we would all have lunch and then we'd come back for the other two blocks. The only other change we, we've talked about making and our instructional leadership team has been talking about this is if we were to go to a longer term, fully remote than a week or two weeks, we would look at going back to the handbook for the schedule because this is set up with red day one and red and white day one all week so that both cohorts get the red day one and the white day one. That really speaks to our science and our math classes that have labs. And it refers to when they have a double class and when they have a single class. And if we did go fully remote for a longer period of time, we would be able to go back to having, having it follow our handbook because we wouldn't need to replicate the lab time each week or not each week for the different cohorts. So that is one small change we would make other than having lunch at the same time. I also wanted to just highlight on this slide that our A East and advisory time is still in this schedule. We are still utilizing that 35 minutes a day for teachers and students to be able to connect for extra help, make up a quiz, ask a question about last night's homework. And that continues in the fully remote model as well as our monthly advisory meetings would, twice a month, advisory meetings would continue as well. We've left that time in there. For the next slide, our expectations for students really remain essentially the same. Our students, whether in person or remote, are expected to report to all classes for attendance and directions. That includes study halls and their A East advisory. They do this through Google meets. When they are fully remote, we do try to plan time in the period where they don't have to be on the screen, but the teacher is still available. They can get back on and ask a question and move along that way. They will attend classes remotely and follow class procedures and expectations set by the teacher. For teachers, they will just be teaching, instead of having two strains of students, students in front of them and remote to teach every period, everyone, they really, it'll be a little bit more workable for them because everyone will be remote and they'll have one audience to get. And also, we will still be continuing with all our extra meetings, after school department meetings, faculty meetings, teacher design time, 504s, IEPs, Wednesday professional development, the instructional leadership team. All of those meetings will still be occurring. We'll just be doing them fully remote in a virtual manner. I also just wanted to talk a little bit about what other, what our non instructional teachers, what other people would be doing. Our special education ed techs, many of them are working directly with students in a study hall setting, and they would continue to do that work virtually. Many of our special ed ed techs are teaching small groups at the level one level, and they would continue doing instruction with students and coursework. Our learning commons ed techs will be supporting any work through remote operation. Our Learning Commons ed techs will be supporting any work through remote operations. If students with their class have research to do, they would still be working on that. And our two ed techs in the Learning Commons this year have been very adaptive and helpful going into classes and doing some subbing, running some study halls. And we would still be tagging them for some of that work on an as-needed basis. Our building ed techs would be used as needed, doing classroom subwork, which they pitch hit daily on. They would be supporting building needs here and remote operations. And Mr. Combs would still be keeping his daily connection with our CTE vocational students and keeping them connected and supported as well. Our administrative assistants in the building would continue work either in the building or remotely, dependent on the circumstances and what is currently allowed. Our goal will be to be here in the building for operations unless we are really told we cannot be in the building. Our long-term supplemental subs that are in class daily, supporting our teachers that are teaching remotely, we have a plan that we would team hit with Allison and the Special Ed Department. If she had some holes that needed to be filled, they might get to be reassigned to help there. And also, some of them would likely help us with our daily sub work needing coverage. If someone had to take a sick day, even though we were remote, they would be helping with that. So we really do have plans for all of our support staff and how they would be working with us and helping us. And we're really pleased that we will be able to support Allison and some of her needs as well. We're happy to be able to do that. So that's the high school's plan.
So just to kind of wrap things up, one last piece that we wanted to talk about is, obviously, when we had to pivot in March, none of these pieces were in place. And I am just amazed by all of the work that each one of these leaders that you've heard from has put in with their staffs to be able to get things to the level that they are. Also want to just make you aware that we understand that there are many other people in our organization, and we have really tried to pay attention to planning what their roles might look like in a fully remote environment. If the governor had a stay-at-home order, for example, as we did in March. And so this slide here just details that a little bit. In terms of our nursing staff, just as they did this spring, they would still be available to support student medical needs. They have a lot of students that they see on a regular basis for a number of things. And this spring, they worked really hard to connect with all of those families and keep that moving forward as well as, you know, they were the girls on the ground getting all the information in regards to the changing mandates and the requirements with the state for COVID. Our academic support staff in all of our schools, even our study center folks at the high school would continue to offer academic supports for students. Again, they would just be remote. Folks in Student Services, like our school counselors and our social workers, would still be available to meet with individuals and small groups of students. Our food services folks would be engaged in delivering meals and making food available. They have been outstanding. I know that especially with the flexibility in the feeding program this year and the fact that all families can access breakfast and lunch every day, our food services staff are busier than ever. And that would still be available to everyone in a fully remote environment. Our Transportation Department, this spring, they became kind of our wheels in Scarborough. And we would again look to them to deliver some of these meals, to deliver materials to students as needed. And so that is in our plan. And our IT department, wow, can we just say how tirelessly they have worked as well? And if we went to a fully remote environment, I am sure the help desk tickets and the request for tech help would continue. And so, again, I think that we have just tried to take a real organizational view of digging into what a red environment could look like. And so hopefully, this helps to paint that picture for all of you now.
As much gratitude as everyone expressed for having that time, I think the board is equally grateful that you all were able to come and present to us tonight just and to the community. Because you just, like you just said, Diane, this is an organizational effort. We're all in this together, and the more information we have and the more on the same page we can be, hopefully that leads to greater success as an organization. And so thank you all so much for preparing these slides and giving your time tonight. I'm not seeing any hands, so I think we'll move on to Agenda Item 6.3, which is our winter athletics update. I'm promoting you right now, Mike.
Hello.
Great. Hi, Mike.
So let me first say on behalf of the Athletics and Activities Department, I want to congratulate Sandy and thank him for all his support these last two years. It's been, it's really been tremendous. We appreciate that. Let me first start out, if you go to the first slide, with a little bit of background on activities first. There's a lot on that slide, but I want to certainly talk about, you know, that side of what we do as well. We're real excited about everything that's happening with activities. Most all the club programs are happening. This is not everything. This is just a snapshot at some things. Oak Hill Players is actually doing their performance. It's called High School Zoomsicle. It's a remote production, and they're working real hard on it. And hopefully, we'll have something pulled together to be able to show remotely at the end of, at the end of January. One Act Play has just decided that they're going to start. They got word from the Main Principles Association. As you must, as you might know, the One Act Play is a part of the Main Principles Association. It's a competition format. They're going to pick up doing an activity, and that gives a little description there about what they're doing. Key Club has continued on with their things, understanding that in a COVID environment, watching their distancing and things like that, but still engaging in community service projects and things of that nature. Ecos has a new club advisor, Mrs. Zavaznik, and we're glad to have her on board and helping out with that program. They have started their recycling and working in their garden and meeting and just, you know, doing a great job. Student Council, and that happens to be a picture right there of the Student Council project that just finished an activity for Project Grace. So they're really engaged. And as you can see, you can go down through and see all the different things that are happening. National Honor Society is doing their ceremony, but it was pushed into February. Jazz Band is only going with one group this year instead of Jazz Band One and Jazz Band Two. But they had enough students to do that. Some things will be in person, obviously not wind instruments, but some of their things will be in person, some of them will be remotely. And Art Club, I'll just thank Erin Landry Fowler for volunteering her time to get the Art Club back going. As you know, Art Club was a program that we had many, many years ago. It was cut from the budget. Erin has started that back up on a volunteer basis, and will be doing some things remotely and what she can do with things in person. Same with middle school. We've been meeting with all the middle school advisors. So it's the same type of explanation there, a lot more virtual, a lot more remote things at the middle school. I will tell you that Diane, who's the director at the middle school, did find a show to do for middle school. It's called The Show Must Go Online. It was actually written for this COVID environment. And so it was a great opportunity for those kids to continue on. And the scripts are all built around doing it virtually and remotely. So that should end up being a great production. I'll also just point out too, one thing that I glanced at was we do have a new advisor with speech and debate, Dave Pay, one of our new employees here as well. And he's just doing a super job with the competitions for that, quite a few kids involved in that. And they're, you know, doing their, I think they have eight or 10 virtual competitions they're doing this year. So go on from there. And in terms of athletics, this is the timeline that's kind of been laid out, the similar sort of thing I shared with you in the fall. So this lays out how things progressed with winter sports. Depending on what happens tomorrow and what we find out tomorrow, we will be looking to start on Monday. This week, we did our call-out meetings with all the students. And in fact, as you know, we did that in the fall, and that was just something that we decided to do. This winter, though, it ended up becoming a mandatory MPA activity, so we had to do the call-out meetings. Fortunately, we're ahead of that because we had already started doing that in the fall. So it was just part of our normal routine. So we've been doing those this week. We wrapped up the last ones actually just before this meeting. And so all the kids are good to go with that. I'm going to have Jordan come on too. Hopefully, somebody promoted Jordan because Jordan is part of our presentation tonight as well. And he's going to, you know, do the next couple of slides.
Yeah, I'm here. Can everybody hear me all right?
We can.
Thanks for having me. I know I don't, I haven't met everybody here in person, but it's a pleasure to meet you all from afar. These next two slides are really information that derives from the Community Sport Guidelines that were put out from the state. Those were put out, you might remember, in the fall. And then they adjusted it a little bit in the beginning of November. So a few changes here. The definitions of the low, moderate risk really haven't changed much. And you'll see on the next slide, what really has changed is the level of allowable activities that fall within those risk levels. But you can see here, we've listed our winter teams here and their risk level. Unfortunately, the only higher-risk sport was the sport of wrestling. And one sport that you don't see here that will be brought up a little bit later because of the date change in the start is volleyball. And as you know, from the fall, volleyball was a moderate-risk sport, but because of the indoors aspect of it, we're not able to compete in the fall simply because the allowable activity didn't allow for such. So if we go to the next slide, Kelly, we can jump right in. So this is a kind of a spreadsheet matrix that Mike and I had developed. It's really what lies within the Community Sport Guidelines, but we tried to present it in a way that was a lot easier for students, families, and our coaches to read. So you can see, it lists every sport here. And the winter season is really spread out between three time periods. So like Mike mentioned, hopefully, if all goes well, Monday, December 7th will be really our first go at it. And during that phase, teams cannot perform any competition-type drills. They can only do skill, skill-building drills and conditioning-type drills as well as being distant from each other. And then when we get into the December 14th, things kind of start to get a little more normalized, if you would, in terms of the sport. Now with wrestling, obviously, they're only allowed to go up to Level Two, which is, they can get together in teams, but they have to remain six feet apart at all time. And Mike might mention this later, but our plan with them right now is to give them access to the weight room when they need it so that they are able to get together as a team and still do something. That's the sport of wrestling. Like I mentioned with volleyball, the NPA has agreed to move the competitive season to hopefully start in February, and we'll talk a little bit about that more in the later slides.
I'll just, I'll just add to, while we're on this slide, that our goal in Scarborough has been to provide some experience for every program and every student that wants to participate in each program. So although wrestling is going to be not traditional, we did want to provide an opportunity for those student athletes to connect with coaches and be able to do something. Same true with indoor track. Indoor track certainly, as you can imagine, would be a challenge to do the traditional meets and tournaments, but we want to provide that opportunity to our student athletes. Really, the toughest ones, and we'll talk about this a little later, is ice hockey and swimming because of facility-related issues. But we really, not every school's doing that, but we really want to provide an opportunity for all our students to be engaged in some after-school activity because we understand the value of that, certainly. And I know you do as well, understand the value of connectedness to school through activities beyond the classroom. We can go to the next slide there. And this is about things that we've done to reduce risk. Some of them you saw in the fall. Those types of things continue. I know Todd and his staff is working really, really hard on filtration systems and things of that nature. Those all benefit our program certainly because now we've moved inside. So of course, the rules change a little bit inside with Athletics and Activities, but the things that are happening around us are really helpful as well. And also, like I mentioned too, although our coaches and student athletes participated in our workshops this week, our coaches are required to attend several workshops. One of them, our annual seasonal coaches mandatory workshop, where we go over COVID things as well as general guidelines that we want them to follow. And as part of their training requirements, as you know, coaches have to take about eight or 10 courses to be considered a certified high school coach. And so part of that new requirement is also an online COVID course for coaches that is a requirement as well. We can continue on. And then these continue to be our goals. We're pretty focused on that. Whether we're remote or whether we're in person, we'll continue to strive to make those connections with our student athletes. All of our coaches now have set up Google Classrooms to be able to communicate with our students as well if we happen to be remote. And so they've all found those kind of electronic ways to, you know, continue to stay connected. Jordan has been a great support in, you know, helping the coaches, especially the ones that are a little more technically challenged, to get all those systems set up so that they can, they'll be able to continue to communicate no matter what environment we're in. We can continue on to the next slide, I think. These are some of the things that our league has done. Certainly, we continue to meet as a league. Um, we're developing schedules in the, in the wintertime, um, they will be very much like the fall, they'll be. Um, those sports that can play games will be set up in a pod system. For the most part, we'll stay within our county, there is some crossover in counties and some sports, but for the most part. We're in our county and they're small pods, um, and we, 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 all the teams that can play games. Are playing about two thirds of their normal schedule. So, um, basketball, for example, if it had 18 games, we're gonna play about 12 games. Uh, the season does officially come to an end at the end of February. But they've reserved the first two weeks in March, um, for winter sports to be able to continue and offer. Uh, some type of postseason if they want to. It won't be anything statewide, um, it would be within your own pod, if you wanted to put together. You know, a little tournament, um, no trophies, no awards, no things like that, but. Um, it would be an opportunity to have a little bit, an end of the season kind of competition to wrap things up. Jordan did speak a little bit about what they've referred to as that wedge season. And so we're beginning to, although we've been very focused on just trying to get the winter started. Um, we are beginning to think about, how do we manage, uh, the facility needs? For volleyball while winter sports are still happening. Uh, so that's gonna, that's gonna be a bit of a challenge, um, to add in volleyball indoors while winter sports is still happening. Um, but we're going to, you know, work through that, there may be some later evening practices, but we'll work through that. Um, on the football front, I'll just bring, bring us back around, cause Jordan mentioned volleyball from the fall. So we'll mention football also from the fall, is there is a, um, a plan out there right now that looks at having a football season. That, a normal football season that would start in May and run through July. I don't know how much traction that will get, um, especially when you think about, um, the concern. That if we're back to somewhat of, of a normal situation next season, next year. Um, we're gonna be ending football in July and looking to start the next football season in August. I don't know, um, if that makes sense, and so that, that's gonna be looked at a little bit harder, but there is a proposal out. Out there, um, with the Football Coaches Association, that they're present, they're bringing forward, um, to take a look at. So that's kind of what's happening there, I think we can move on to the next one. You know, some of our roadblocks and really probably the biggest one is, um, facility related, as you can imagine. Um, our primary facility for hockey was, uh, USM. USM is not gonna allow outside groups onto their campus, even during the time when student F, when their students are not there. Um, so most of the colleges have shut down, which closed a lot of rinks. Um, the Civic Center was also the second place that we used for hockey. And they're looking not to put their ice in. And so it really shuts us down with the hockey program. I, I was able to secure some ice, um, at the, the rink in Portland, Trobe Ice Arena. And I have covered, uh, ice, uh, through January 2nd. I have no game ice and I have no ice beyond January 2nd. Um, so hockey is going to be a challenge this year. And, um, mostly related to facilities, um, but they're moving forward with trying to do a program. We're not alone, in fact, I think that we're, we're better off than some schools are even. Um, there are schools such as South Paul and in Cape that, um, have no ice now because they completely relied on Civic Center. Um, for their eyes, so, um, we're still in talks with the Civic Center, we've reached out to over 15 ranks. Um, we have some communication, uh, going with some ranks to try to get some other ice, but that's a big challenge. Um, fortunately, we don't have the problem of pools like some schools do. Many YMCA shut their pools down to non-members. And so a lot of schools that use Ys, for example, are struggling to figure out how they're gonna do a swim program. We're fortunate that we don't have to do that, the, the struggle with pool time is that we're only allowed 18 people. Uh, 18 students plus the two coaches, 18 students in the pool area at any one time. We have a large, uh, swim program. And so just trying to continue to figure out what strategize ways to, you know, accommodate everybody. So that we don't have to do something like have cuts in a sport that we didn't normally have cuts in. Um, we've also been trying to, you know, work with Todd Jipson and some of the other, uh, building principals. Uh, on use of the school facilities, uh, Kelly Crosby has been very helpful. Um, and, and also, you know, certainly Todd. Uh, because we're really trying to minimize students in the common spaces. Um, in, in the past, for example, with track, track, there's so many students and so many activities, use three different facilities. Um, to be able to have practice. And so, of course, we can't use the middle school because middle school sports is going to happen, actually, they are gonna have a basketball season. And so we, because of how many students were allowed, um, in one space at any one time. We wouldn't be able to have high school using the middle school anymore while middle school was using it. Um, we also are trying to minimize students, for example, running in the hallways. Because it just means more sanitization for the athletic trainers, uh, excuse me, for the, uh, custodians. So, uh, you know, we're really trying to, uh, you know, work through all those facility issues. Just, just, um, that's just been a real challenge, um, you know, to do. And you can see some of the rest of the things that we have on there, as you know, yellow is red for us. Um, and so we're keeping our fingers crossed for tomorrow, there is a poss- there is some scuttlebutt about, um. The possibility that even if we're in green, the commissioner, Commissioner Lampro may decide to still not allow. Um, sports, community sports and, um, school sports to happen. Um, only because of, you know, such a high rate in the COVID number. I will, I am happy to report though, that our fall season saw no stoppages because of COVID. Um, not every school could say that, but we, we were able to finish the entire season. And not really have any impact from COVID. Uh, and I think that speaks to, like, you know, the good work of our kids, you know, doing the right thing, the good work of our coaches. Uh, doing the right thing and the systems that we have in place as well. Um, so booster funding is another area that we're struggling with, as you can imagine. Um, you know, boosters continue to pick up those costs that, um, the budget doesn't cover anymore. Um, most recently is uniforms, for example, that was cut from the budget, and so boosters have helped pick that up. Although booster funding and booster fundraising is a real struggle in a COVID environment. For example, the basketball booster's major fundraiser was the Christmas tournament. And so that's not gonna happen this year, and so they're trying to, you know, strategize about other ways for fundraising. And our boosters have been wonderful in coming up with creative ways to, you know, raise funds, doing things remotely. Uh, you know, all the things that they have to do to, to try to do that, but they're certainly not going to. Um, raise the money that they've raised in the past, so what, we are concerned about that moving forward. Um, and we've, um, you know, we spent some time talking about, um. The groups being very frugal about their spending this year and really scrutinizing, um, each dollar. Because as we told them, um, you know, we may come back to you and need to, you know, look at covering more essential components of programs. Depending on how budgets go, I'm really concerned about that moving forward because of the lack of. The ability to do the same type of fundraising that we've done, um, in the past. We'll go on to the next slide and Jordan will pick it up again. Um, so here, here's just a quick look at, at where we stand in terms of, um, registrations.
Um, student athletes registered for the winter, both middle school and high school. Um, I, I would, I think Mike and I would fully, um, anticipate both of these numbers to go up. Um, it's not unusual that we have many, many registrations come in the, the weekend before we start. Um, and actually, as of, since Tuesday, um, the high school number has, has jumped up about 15 or so. Um, so, you know, we are, we're in a good place right now, um, in terms of registrations and I, I. I would fully anticipate those to keep climbing as we get closer and closer to Monday. Um, where do we go from here, so, you know, our department is, um. Really, um, just gonna continue to do our best to, to communicate all this information, um, if, if you've seen the, the website. And, um, seen the documents that we've, we've put out, i- it's a, it's a ton of information. Um, and it, and it can get overwhelming, and so we're doing our best to send that out as, as often, um, as we get it. And, um, you know, we're just gonna continue to do so. Um, as, as far as middle school, um, actually yesterday, um, we had sent out a brief letter. Through Swift Reach, um, to seventh and eighth grade families, um, explaining that. In the middle of November, the middle school athletic conference had voted to hold off until January 11th. To start the competitive winter one season, um, winter one season at the middle school is really just the sport of basketball. Um, there currently has been no talks about the winter two season, um, in depth, which is. Um, the middle school sports of swimming, wrestling and indoor track. And like Mike had mentioned with the high school, um, the reason there's no real information regarding those at the middle school level is. Is really due to facility issues, um, you know, with the struggles of the high school teams trying to get into those facilities. It's, it's gonna make it, uh, very, very difficult for middle school, um, to, to use those as well. So, um, tho- the winter two season is, um, is really still a wait and see. Um, but January 11th is our, is our planned start date for, um, the middle school basketball season, so. Um, so we'll, we'll get ready for that, and then, you know, Mike had mentioned already a little bit about the wedge season, so. This wedge season, um, as of right now, I think the date really is February 22nd. So, um, the volleyball committee, um, you know, voted to. To do a competitive volleyball season starting February 22nd. Um, there'll be two weeks of a, of a preseason for those students that, um, wouldn't currently be, be doing a winter sport. And then games would pick up two weeks later, um, March 8th, and then I believe that's the plan right now for. Um, the unified basketball program, um, they're still working on that bulletin. Um, and what that season will look like, it's gonna be a little bit different, um, like most things are right now. Um, and then wrestling, um, the NPA wrestling committee did, um, vote to push back the competitive start date. To the February 26th, um, obviously with that said, the community sport guidelines would still have to change for us to. To make that a go, but, um, we're still hopeful, so. Um, and then, you know, like, like everybody's doing in our buildings, is just to continue to try and, to make all of our safety measures. Um, the best that they can be, and, um, I think that we're constantly doing that, so. That's, that's really what we've got. Questions?
Um, in helping to fund uniforms or any of the events that they may be putting on.
I think in some cases there are, unfortunately, um, doing things the way we've doing, um, have come with a cost as well. And so, um, so we've had to, uh, we were able to secure some COVID money for the, some things that we needed, working with Kate. But, um, some of the additional expenses have also come out of our budget. Um, we've certainly needed to use more game support, um, because. Uh, all the COVID rules with sanitizing equipment, um, at breaks during the games and things of that nature. So, um, there's been some other costs associated with, um, doing sports and athletics. But we certainly do help where we can. Um, I don't think uniforms is one of those places that we could help, it's just such a big number. Um, and, but, um, you know, we're helping, we're helping where we can, um, with budget items. But we have incurred additional expenses, um, just to be able to put on the programs that we're doing. But li- live streaming, live streaming alone is an increase, um, live streaming every single event. For example.
Um, especially when you think about, um, the concern that if we're back to s- somewhat of, of a normal situation next season, next year. Um, we're gonna be ending football in July and looking to start the next football season in August. I don't know, um, if that makes sense, and so that, um, you know. We understand the value of that, of that connectedness and understand the value of students involved in after school activities. And we're so grateful and proud frankly of, um, you know, being able to provide these services. It, it is a ton of work, it's, it, as everybody said, it's not double the work, it's really 10 times the work. And it's, and it's really because of having to be in the weeds of every little thing. You know, a media person wants to come to a game and it's, you know, it's, it's 10 things you have to do. Um, so, um, it is a lot of work, but, um, it's, uh, you know, to see the kids. And see their happiness and, and being engaged is, um. And, and, and understanding the value of that engagement is certainly worth that, so thank you for saying that, we really appreciate it. Moving on to, uh, agenda item 7.0 is the chair's report. Um, before I present my slide, I, I also wanna say thank you to Sandy.
Moving on to agenda item 7.0 is the chair's report. Before I present my slide, I, I also want to say thank you to Sandy. I know that he does not want attention brought to him or to his announcement, but, you know, we can't let the moment go by without saying thank you. This is not the year or year and a half, two years that you signed up for, Sandy. And your kind and calm demeanor has been an asset to us all. So thank you very much. For my chair's report tonight, the first thing I wanted to present to the board was a breakdown of where we're at with the equity steering committee process. I created this graphic and hope, it looks like a lot, but hopefully it is readable. It, it reads right to left, right? So, so, so just, just bear with me here for a second. So we, Shannon and I had the opportunity to do a call after our last meeting. So the first little bubble there represents our last meeting where we voted to allow MAEC, which is the main, nope, Mid-Atlantic Equity Consortium, to enter into an MOU with Scarborough Public Schools. After that meeting, Shannon and I had the opportunity to do a call with our liaison from MAEC just to give us the kind of next steps and to walk us through what the process was going to be. I think Shannon and I both probably took two and a half or three pages of notes apiece. She is a wealth of information. She answers all of our questions with grace. And so I feel really great about this partnership. What we need to do as a board is outlined across the top of the graphic and work that's going to be taking place with our district, within the district and with our staff is outlined along the bottom of the graphic. So across the top, December 3rd is today. Later on in our agenda, we have an action item to authorize the communications committee to solicit applicants for an equity steering committee. This is my recommendation for how we should move forward. And once I've kind of gone through my presentation, I'm certainly open to questions. When we formed the building steering committee a year ago, in order to form the building steering committee, we tasked the long range planning committee with soliciting those applicants. And so for me, I kind of went back to that same model and said, what's the best way to do this at a committee level so that we can move a little more quickly than when we all have to meet as a full board? Because I don't think that all of these decisions need to be full board decisions. To me, the communications and outreach, technically it's the communications and outreach task force is the full name of that committee, is a logical fit for soliciting these kind of applicants. So we'll, we can discuss that further. Like I said, it's an action item later on in our agenda. If we do pursue this path, then the communications committee will have the opportunity to meet with MAEC in order to help them to develop what the application should look like, what kind of questions to ask so that we solicit a broad base of volunteers who are willing to give their time to this committee. After they've done that, the communications committee would come back to the board and give us their recommendations. We can go into executive session to review the applications and decide how many members we would like on the committee and choose the committee in executive session. And then we would come back to public session and the board would vote to form the equity steering committee based on the discussion that we had as a group in the executive session. Along the bottom, while the board is taking this process and following through with the necessary steps for the process, during the month of December, the MAEC would be able to consult with and arrange for a climate survey and an equity audit to take place within our schools. Both of those tasks are staff facilitated. And so one of the things that we kind of spent our phone call talking about and wrapping our heads around was what the board's role is in this process versus what the staff's role is, you know, in this process. And so the, the staff would have, you know, the task of organizing and figuring out the best way to initiate the climate survey and the equity audits at the building level. And again, MAEC had plenty of suggestions and guidance that our staff could use. The staff will then gather the data. The data is then sent to MAEC to be analyzed and compounded and whatever it is that they do to put it into a report. And that data would be presented to our equity steering committee, at which time they can solicit more data, they can ask questions, they can brainstorm next steps. And that's the point when that committee really gets into the meat of what's going on in our schools and where we want to go next so that they can come back to the board and say, this is the work that was done. These are the results that were found. These are the next steps that we would like to see the district take. And so that's kind of, you know, my 300-foot view of, of how this process should probably play out. Do I have questions?
Looks good, Eva.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, so as I mentioned, to tie this up, later on, I have wording prepared for a motion under action items for us to authorize the communication committee to solicit the applicants for the equity steering committee. Okay, you can go on to the next slide. Thank you, Kelly. The only other bit of business that I wanted to share with the board is that I'm hoping to schedule a retreat. The retreat is separate from the workshop that we need to do. So there are two things that we have going on. We need to do a workshop to review our board goals, but that typically takes place during one of our regularly scheduled workshop times. And we can look at the calendar and Sandy and I and Diane can discuss when logically that makes sense to use that workshop time. But this is something separate. We did this the first year that I was on the board, but then because last year we had such a disruption and COVID crisis happening that we didn't do a retreat. But I would like to make this a priority for the board. Some of the proposed agenda items that I would like to discuss, I would like to review the operating protocols. There are 12 operating protocols currently posted publicly on our webpage. Just give those a once over and make sure that that's something that we all still believe in as a board. I'd like to update and consolidate the liaison roles. As I said, when I was assigning them, there's a lot of redundancy there. Some of the committees don't exist anymore. And so I think that just needs to be cleaned up. Review committee charges. I think as I mentioned, the curriculum committee doesn't have a formal written charge. And then last but not least, this is a concern that I've heard from a couple of different people over the past year or so, nothing new. But just that we define our roles, responsibilities and expectations of our committee chairs and our liaison. And so just to have that discussion all as a group, I think would be really beneficial for us. I'm hoping that we can find a way to do this in public. I'm sorry, not in public, all of our meetings are in public, in person. Obviously with spacing, you know, hopefully if it was the board and we, and we could get a room that was big enough, if we could have chambers A and B, for example, just so that we could see each other and connect. I think that would be really beneficial for us all. And so stay tuned for a doodle poll and I'll try and get that scheduled for January. And also I'm certainly open to other agenda items and suggestions for that retreat. Questions?
Would student reps be included in that?
Absolutely, Max.
Cool.
Yep, good question. Okay, I think we can move on. Agenda item 8.0 is committee report.
All right. Communication. Sorry, communications had its first meeting this past week. And we started building kind of some foundational pieces, really looking at the various modes. And there's a lot more than I think we recognized until we started getting them on paper and looking at who the target audience is for each of those modes. So if we're looking at the newsletter, who is that going to? And we're also working through, what is the timeline to post to them? So if we wanted to get something into the leader, if we wanted it in the newsletter, when do we need to get that information in in order to meet deadlines? So we're working through that. We're also trying to build out a timeline for 2021 communications because there's a lot. And in order to get ahead of some of this, what I'm asking for is if all the committee chairs could send over potential topics that you believe are going to come out of your committees for this year? And if you have any timelines, even if they're just rough, if you could share that with us and we will start plugging that in so that we can come back and we can start showing, you just sort of see a little model this on the bottom. We can start looking at what sort of communications will come out in January? What's coming out in February? So that we can make sure that we're targeting the right things at the right times? Because a lot of this is going to overlap. And we just want to make sure that we're being really clear on the messages and the messaging that we're sending out to the community and nothing gets lost along the way. In preparation and expectation of the work and the equity piece, we've scheduled two more meetings. We've got one this coming Monday and one on the 14th, both at 11 o'clock. So we'll be able to really get a lot of work underway and ready to start rolling in the month of December. I did borrow from the previous committee's stay in touch information just to make sure that folks know, email us at boe@scorbaroschools.org if you have public comments and you can't join the Zoom, we have a link there. And then reminders that we're on Twitter and Facebook and Instagram. Took me just a hot second there to get it out. That's all I have.
Thanks, Leanne. Negotiations?
Yes, I have two things to update on, actually three. One's not on here because it just happened earlier today. But all of the MOUs, all six, six of them? All six of them have been signed, ratified and are posted on the SPS website. So we can finally put a big ink check mark in that for now. On the horizon, there are three CBAs that are due to expire on June 30th, 2021. I actually originally thought there were four, but I was reminded today in a conversation that our first conversation is negotiations, that the administrator contract actually has been extended for another year. So that brings us from four to three, which is actually good news because three contracts is a lot. So the ESP contract, the bus driver's contract and the custodian slash food service contract will all come due in June. And so I would expect the process to begin probably after the holidays to start having conversations about building new contracts for those groups. The negotiations team, the new team did meet for the first time today just to kind of have an orientation to talk a little bit about the process, how the process can be initiated and to go over one of the documents from MSMA that came out of the conference we recently attended virtually, which is the ABCs of collective bargaining, talking about the different things that are subject to bargaining, the things that aren't and everything that lives in between. So we had a great conversation. I think it's going to be a very strong team and we have a work title for us for sure.
Aleisha, would you like to add something?
I would just, thank you for that, Nick. Would you mind just explaining your acronyms for the public in case they don't know or haven't heard? I know you've explained them before.
Sure, I'd be happy to. You do this for a couple of years and you start to live in acronym world. CBAs are collective bargaining agreements. The MOUs are memorandum of understanding. ESP is educational support professionals, which includes ed techs, clerks, admin assistants, LPNs. I think there's another couple of groups in there. Secretaries are in there. I think that's all of them.
Thank you, Nick.
Yep.
Finance committee.
Cool, guys, it's that time again. Budget development season is upon us. So our first meeting is next week with the new committee. And that's really it, but April, if it's okay, I'll use this time just to give a quick town council liaison update.
Sure, absolutely.
Cool. So just really quickly, the, I think the main thing for everyone to be aware of, I think this is an action on all of us, but it mostly sits with the long range planning committee, is the town is undergoing a review of the comprehensive plan. It's something that's been happening for the last couple of weeks. And I think the workshop, the town council is having a workshop on December 10th. The town council liaison, John, mentioned to me that there's a section in the comprehensive plan that relates to schools enrollment. And some of the data might be a little bit out of date and some of the plans in there might also be a little out of date. So his recommendation was just that we review it. And if we have any feedback, want to modify in any way that we provide that information to John and then he will then sort of relay that onto the rest of the group. So I spoke to Krista and I think maybe we'll pick this up as part of long range, but everyone has access to that plan and can have a look at it themselves. That's it.
Excellent, Sarah. Thank you. Before we move on to student reports, I need a motion to extend our meeting beyond 9:30.
So moved.
And Diane, could you call a vote, please?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Kazalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Sider?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. Okay. Kelly, you can go on to the next slide, please.
Awesome. So Mr. Lecage talked about this earlier, but I'm going to say it again because I'm in this. So as a lot of you know, I do Oco players. And so basically our director over the summer, she went to a lot of these like sessions where she learned about this new kind of theater that's being piloted in the face of the global pandemic. And we're basically trying that out at our school. So as you can see in the bottom left quarter, there's me, I'm in a recording session. And basically what, how this show is working, it's a cabaret style musical. And everything is done remote or like safely in the theater. So as you can see in the bottom center, it's filming in the theater with masks. And then the top center, we're filming out of the turf field. And then on the right, you can see me, that is me in a curly brown wig, in a showgirl costume in the back doing a little, little pose. That is me. So that's really fun. Basically, we're putting on this show and it's so exciting. Like everyone in it is like filming in their houses. And that's going to be ready hopefully in January. So there's more to come with that. So that has been something that I think there's like 20 students involved. It's very exciting and everyone's really happy that we can just like keep doing theater during the pandemic. And even though it isn't perfect and it's not what we would want to be doing right now, it's something. So we're going to take what we can get. So yeah, that's awesome. So if we could go to our next slide. Great. So this fall, we had a very successful sports season at the high school. There was boys and girls soccer, cheering, outdoor volleyball, seven-on-seven football, cross country and field hockey. I think that's all of them. If I missed any, I'm so sorry. They all took place and everyone seemed to have a really good season. I'm not an athlete. I've never been an athlete. I don't really like sports, but you know, it was really great to see everyone involved. And it just, it adds a sense of normality to the school culture to still have sports. So it was really great. So yeah, that's everything for my report. So I'm going to toss it over to Gabby.
Okay. So this Random Act of Kindness Board, that's at Blue Point School. And basically what it is, is students, when they complete one of these specific acts, like smile so big that people can see it without even your mask or with your mask or like put, put on your mask without being asked. They'll color it in. And this is used at home and at school just to create a positive environment and keep track of their kindness. And then if you can press play on this video. I don't know if you can hear it. I don't know if you can hear it. Okay. Okay. Well, anyway, that's what uh music class looks like at Wentworth. This is Mr. Needle's fifth grade class. Yeah, and that's them practicing body rhythm. And it's a way for them to get active, being socially distant. And it looks fun. I wish we did that at the high school, but. And then at the top right, there's, those are letters that Wentworth's kids made to veterans for Veterans Day. And then in the bottom is an elementary school book fair. So it's a virtual book fair for the primary schools. And I know the book fairs were my favorite part, like one of my favorite things in elementary school. So I'm glad these kids still have the opportunity for like a somewhat realistic looking book fair. It seems fun. So that's all.
Thank you so much, guys. Um, I know that as Board members, not, especially considering not all of us have kids and none of us have kids at every phase level. So uh it's so nice to be able to get a glimpse inside the schools and, and especially from your perspective. So thank you. Agenda item ten point O is new business. Then item ten point one is appointments. Sandy, do you have the appointment ready?
Sure do. High school choral music teacher, Jeffrey Mosher, has been selected to fill this position created by resignation. Mr. Mosher receives his Bachelor of Music degree in voice performance from the University of Southern Maine and anticipates earning a second Bachelor's degree in music ed in two thousand and twenty-one, also from U S M. He has been very active in several musical positions, including Director of Music at Camp Takahoe in Naples, Maine. Voice faculty at the Portland Conservatory of Music, as well as both the Director of Choral Activities and Voice Faculty at the Murray Conservationatorium in Auburn, Aubrey, Australia. Mr. Mosher will be placed on step one of the Bachelor's plus fifteen scale per the collective bargaining agreement. The recommendation is to appoint Jeffrey Mosher as a high school choral music teacher.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Diane?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Katalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Great. Congratulations and welcome. Agenda item ten point two is the meeting minutes for November second, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, Diane?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Katalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Agenda item ten point three is the meeting minutes of November fifth, two thousand and twenty. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
For our discussion, um, I actually have two minor edits to the minutes. Uh, the first edit is that the vote to approve uh Leanne Katalonis as Vice Chair, the vote should be reflected as six to one. And then later on in the minutes, um, the third resolution at the Delegate Assembly, um, our amendment did not pass, but the resolution itself did pass. And so the minutes should reflect that the resolution itself did pass, please. I know that was confusing because the Delegate Assembly is in and of itself confusing. Is there any other discussion? Okay, Diane?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Katalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item ten point four is the Scarborough Public Schools Ad hoc Equity Steering Committee. And I drafted the following language for a motion. Uh, I move to grant the approval of the Communications Committee to solicit applicants for the Scarborough Public Schools Equity Steering Committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Katalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Agenda item eleven point O is adjournment for tonight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I can second.
I think we're ready, Diane.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Katalonis?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Have a good weekend and next two weeks. Bye.